We're going to open this city council meeting of April 9th, 2024. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental, developmental, mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, natural origin, race, religion, sex or sex, sex orientation. Tonight we have Ward three, Ward two councillor Dylan Benson, councillor-at-large Valerie Gilman, Ward four councillor Frank Mejota, Ward one councillor Scott Memard, councillor-at-large councillor Jeff Worthley, Ward three councillor Marjorie Grace, councillor-at-large Jason Grow, and vice president councillor Sean Nolan from Ward five. And in attendance we have
Morning.
Here we have, we have Kevin Gargan from the fire department, Eric Smith from the fire department, CAO Joe Cahill, city legal Suzanne Egan, city auditor Kenny Costa. They are in attendance and in the auditorium we have Danielle, Danielle Argentina's last name. Oh, and let's not forget our, our new city clerk, Ace Poirier. And Gary Johnston, the assistant city assessor, and Danielle is the city records, vital record specialist. Thank you for being here. And that, that's everyone. Sorry about the confusion and a little shake around, but we are going to have a flag salute and we will have a moment of silence for Xander Schultz, longtime firefighter and fantastic public servant. And that will be led by Sean Nolan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to take a moment of silence and have some words for Xander Schultz from the fire department. It's always a sad day when we have to do a memoriam for someone that worked in the city. It just so happens the last three meetings we've had to do this and we've lost a lot of great people in the past and as of now, and it's only a matter of time, but other great people will fall as well and we'll recognize them the same. Xander Schultz was a wonderful person. He worked with the community. He came into the fire department. He worked out in Colorado doing wildfires. He met his wife, I believe, in Oregon or Washington in the Coast Guard. They moved to Gloucester and when Xander came to the fire department, he really stressed the importance of paramedics and bringing paramedics into it and changing the landscape of our fire department for the better. We've always had a great fire department, but I would challenge anybody to show me a better fire department and paramedic division than we have in Gloucester, Mass. And a lot of that has to do with Xander. During tough times, he worked with community activists, with different groups in the city to make sure that people understood the importance of mental health, physical health, elderly health. He worked with people with substance abuse. He worked with trying to help people who were having issues with Narcan. One of the strongest, happiest, pro-gloster people you'll ever meet. And for knowing him, which I got to meet him through the city council, the first started with a betterment program on a road project. And since then, we kept in touch and we talk and I got to follow and learn a lot of things about him as a man and as a family person. And it's very sad for me today to have to do this tonight for a man that was so young that still had so much more to give to everybody. So with that being said, before we go into the moment of silence, I'd like to ask if Chief Eric Smith would like to have a few words.
Thanks, council. Yeah, I would echo everything that you've said. Obviously, it's a tough time, terrible for the family, tough on all the folks that he's worked with. And, you know, we've heard from across the state, as you said, he was extremely involved in EMS. He's won numerous awards, you know, from stroke alerts and bringing that really kind of on plane with, with how we deal with, you know, heart attacks in the field and getting those hospitals prepped up to do things that they do that we can't do in the field, but to do them quicker. So he, he's done a lot, you know, for this department. He's done a lot in the field of EMS and in the state, and he will certainly be sadly missed by all that knew him. So we really appreciate the moment of silence to, to honor him and his legacy and to honor his family.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief Smith. At this time, I'd like to ask the council president, Tony Grow, if we could have any additions from any other council members at this time?
Absolutely.
And we, from right to left, councillor Memard.
I had the privilege of knowing Xander and his family when they joined the local UU church 20 odd years ago, when they first were here in Gloucester. And he was just an impressive guy and all the attributes that have described, been described to him. And it's a sad loss for both his family and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Nolan. I don't know that I could say it better than you did, so I appreciate that. I've known Xander for quite a time, long time, and all the members of the fire department are struggling with this one because it was preventable. And I just want to reach out and let everyone know that if you need help, ask, because there's resources available to help people. So with that said, I know we're all going to deal with this tragedy in our own ways. I just wish my best to his family, his young family, and to the rest of the department.
I didn't have the pleasure of knowing Xander and I'm sad about that. What I have learned about him since his passing is that he makes me want to be a better person just in learning what the wonderful things that he did with his life. My condolences to his family and to the fire department.
I don't have much to add except to say that our family's thoughts are with yours. It's always a tragedy to be lost at this early age in life and we know that it will be a long time to heal, but he was a good man and that is something to always keep in your heart.
My thoughts and prayers are going out with the family during this difficult time. And I know the entire department is, is hurt, they're mourning. And my prayers are with the family, they're with the entire force. And I know that this is a very challenging time and I did not get the pleasure to meet firefighter Schultz, but I would have loved every minute. My thoughts and prayers are with everyone during this time.
My heart goes out for the family and for all the brothers and sisters of Xander on the Gloucester Fire Department and all of our emergency folks in our city.
I didn't have the pleasure of knowing him, but my thoughts and prayers are with his family and the City of Gloucester. Thank you.
Thank you all. I did not have the pleasure of getting to know Xander very well. But what I've come to learn, this is a great loss for the city and it's, it's obviously a more tremendous loss for his family. And as everyone has said, our hearts go out to them. And I would just like to thank Chief Smith and councillor Nolan for their very heartfelt words on this very solemn situation. And we will now see you with the moment of silence. Next order of business, madam clerk.
Oral communications.
This is time for oral communications. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak at this time on anything that is not on the agenda. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint in the nature, of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, make their statement without debate, and the city council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under, under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Madam clerk, do we have any hands raised?
No.
Going, going, gone. Madam clerk, next order of business.
Confirmation of new appointments.
Councillor Nolan, confirmation of new appointments. First up, we have in Gloucester, Suzanne Morale, term to expire 2/15/2027. Suzanne, how you doing tonight? Susan, would you like to come up and tell us a little bit about yourself? You're going to have to push the mic button back on. Take as long as you want.
Is that on? Yes. Okay. Well, first of all, thank you very much for having me tonight. I have been an alternate on the historical commission for about seven years since, since I moved here and since I've missed only two meetings, I think it's about time that I had the privilege of voting at these meetings. So I'm very excited about stepping up. And in preparation of that, what I did was I looked over all of the projects that the historical commissions have done over the last several years and came up with 18. And I created a, an operations manual. I created a project summary for each of those 18 projects, lit the fire under the commission. And we are now having our first preservation awards since before COVID. So I hope you'll all attend. That's Sunday, May 19th at the museum. There'll be eight awards being given out. Aside from that, I'm very excited about the historical plaques program being resurrected, actually. Prue Fish, you may know, started it in 1987. We have about 80 plaques that were distributed then. There are only about 40 of them on houses now. So we worked with legal and other departments. We created a four-page application for people. They can go to archives and have their houses researched. They bring their research to us and we meet and we verify the research. And if it meets our standards, then they can work with the vendor and have a house plaque put up. Very excited that, we haven't advertised this at all, but we already have six plaques from this year that will, that have been distributed. I also did an analysis with the tax records and found out that Gloucester has over 8,000 houses that are more than 50 years old. So we actually have 8,000 houses that would qualify for a historic house plaque. Not that I think we'll have that many, but we are excited about identifying some of Gloucester's extraordinary assets that we have. We have seven houses in the 1600s. We have several hundred of the 1700s and many hundreds in the 1800s. So we have extraordinary historical assets here. We're very excited about communicating this with the community, perhaps having lecture series. We have lots of ideas. I have a lot of energy and I'd look very forward to having the privilege to vote and to continue to be on this commission.
Excellent. Thank you, Suzanne. Is there any councillor questions or Susan, is there any councillor questions or comments?
Councillor Mejota.
Susan, it was great hearing you last week and it's great hearing you this week. You're very passionate and you're going to be a great asset to the city. So thank you.
Councillor Gilman.
Susan, I loved hearing some of the historical data of all the houses that we have. So thank you for adding that value and thank you for stepping up to be a voting member. You certainly deserve it if you've only missed three meetings in all the years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councillor Grace.
Hi, Susan. Thank you so very much for taking on yet another role within, within the historic commission and I'm grateful that you will be a voting member now. The history of this city is, makes us who we are. Are you having trouble hearing me? I speak very softly. Thank you. Our history is what makes us who we are and we have such a beautiful and amazing history in this, in this city. And thank you so much for being one of the stewards of preserving it. I'm grateful.
It's a pleasure. Absolute pleasure. I, I also give a talk on the historic hotels of East Gloucester. There were 40 hotels on Cape Anne at one time, it turned in the century, and I researched the 15 of them that were in East Gloucester. It was an extraordinary era of tourism. And in doing that, I just have a senior moment, but where's I going with it? Sorry. Yep.
Councillor Memard.
Susan, I just wanted to join my fellow councillors in thanking you for helping to celebrate Gloucester's rich historical traditions.
Yes.
And the best tradition that Prudence Fish would appreciate for so much. So thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. You're welcome. And I could not do that without the support of my husband. Helps me all the time.
Councillor Grow.
Are you genuinely trying to tell us that there was a tourist economy 100 years ago in this town? I risked a thought. Welcome to the commission.
What's that?
I'm sorry, I said.
Yes, there was, and you should all.
Thank you for those words of wisdom, councillor Grow. Councillor Benson.
I'll, I'll just continue from my fellow councillors. Thank you, Susan, for stepping up and thank you for your many years of service on this commission and your contribution to telling folks about the history of Gloucester. And so many folks come to Gloucester because of this history. People from all corners of the world visit Gloucester because of that history and thank you for being part of that. And it's very interesting to, you just gave me something that I didn't know about the 30 odd hotels. I didn't know that. And I also knew one of our presidents stayed here many years ago. I think it was President, 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 not Wilson, but one of the presidents came here. So, so thank you so much.
It was Taft.
Okay, yes.
It was Taft. He stayed one overnight in East Gloucester.
All right. Well, I thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Susan, now I restored a house and got a plaque from the preservation. Now is that, are you guys, did you guys take over the preservation plaques that they gave out back in the 90s?
Yes. It was Prue Fish's program. And she distributed.
No, actually, back then it was a different woman who ran it.
Yes, it was a committee.
That the recording.
It was, okay. Yes, there was a committee. It was the CPC, Community Preservation Committee. Correct. And some of those plaques are still hanging. There's only about eight of them.
Yeah, I think the one on my old house is still there.
Okay, wonderful.
Hollinsby House at the top of Brig Street on Summer Street.
I probably have a picture of it because in order to get the inventory of what Prue did, because her, her records weren't that clear, my husband and granddaughter and I went around to all 83 addresses that she had listed to see what plaques were still hanging and took pictures of them all. So I probably have a picture of yours.
I have the information on that. I'll try to get it to you.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay.
And thank you very much for stepping forward.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Committee report, please, councillor Nolan.
So, on a motion by councillor Mejota, seconded by councillor Grace, the ordinance administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend that city council support Suzanne Morale to the Gloucester Historical Commission, term to end 2/15/27, and I so move.
Second. Motion says to appoint, not support.
Up to appoint.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Susan. You'll forever be Suzanne to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next order of business, madam clerk.
You have another appointment up.
Thank you. Councillor Nolan.
So in the Gloucester Clean City Commission, we have Barnaby Prentigast, term to end 2/15/27. Barnaby, how you doing tonight? If you could just come up and tell us a little bit about yourself, that'd be awesome.
Councillors, Mr. President, thank you very much for considering my appointment to the Clean City Commission. I have on my Be Clean t-shirt, which is a Babsin Balder, but at the, I'm not very good at blowing my own trumpet, but I'll, and I'm sorry I haven't sent a resume in yet, but I've been very grateful and overwhelmed by the support I've received from so many residents. I came to the US in 2004, moved to Gloucester in 2006, had to go to Florida for a couple of years for my wife's work. The plan was always to return to our home here. Florida was where my swimming and biking and running hobbies got pretty serious and I ran my first marathon in Tampa before traveling a little further afield to complete some Ironman races. When we first came to the US, I didn't have a work permit and I lived as a, well, as a house husband. That was my job. My daughter was born less than a year after we moved to Gloucester. While she was in the Gloucester Public School System, she, I volunteered at East Gloucester Elementary, both as support for the teachers in the early grades and then later on as a librarian. They're a fine bunch of people. Mostly I've been a stay-at-home parent and even if the hours are a little extreme on occasion, it's a great job. I've worked in Gloucester on boats for a couple of years. I was a stern man, one of the hardest working lobsmen in the harbor, and I did a little seine fishing on a couple of the boats there. So currently I do carpentry and handyman work for a friend's business, but mostly I'm a parent who spends an awful lot of time walking my dogs in Gloucester's vast wooded areas. As I said, I'm an amateur athlete, so I run and bike and hike around the place. I cover about 50 miles a week in the city on foot. And as such, you see a slightly slower pace and you see different things when you're moving around at that speed. And there's a lot of litter. Some of it's quite obvious, some isn't very obvious. It's a big city by area and there are some immediate issues with particular types of leavings. A popular one we hear a lot about is, or an unpopular one, we hear a lot about discarded nit bottles. And I think the commission should be able to come up with a solution that will receive broad support, whether it's going to be a ban or deposits or something. That obviously is a matter for consideration of the committee and hopefully we can make a recommendation that people can get behind. There are already just hundreds of volunteers who go out and off their own bats and some of them organized, collecting litter and trying to clean up, clean up Gloucester. And hopefully as a committee, we can help coordinate some of those efforts and add to them. And we might also be able to help a citywide approach. There are, well, 30,000 people living here of whom quite a few could pick up a piece of litter every now and again. And, you know, Walt Disney used to say that no man is too good to pick up a piece of litter. It's reported. And if everybody picked up one piece of litter a day, then that's 365 pieces of litter multiplied by 20,000. So that's a lot of garbage taken care of, which, you know, perhaps we can do that. And maybe, you know, one day we'll reach a point where people visit Gloucester and go home saying, I've never seen a city in New England that clean, you know, which would be something. Anyway, there are, there are some other things that we could think about addressing, one of which is a bit sensitive in that, you know, during some periods we have small encampments of folk living in the woods and it's much easier to take your food into the woods than it is to take the discarded wrappers and so on out of the woods. And, you know, perhaps there's something we could do to recognize that they are people in need of some help and we could maybe even get out there and help clean up their areas if they were welcoming, if they willing to let us do so. And similarly, there's, there may be scope to enlist high schoolers. They go into the woods and, I don't know, Bible readings or something, but sometimes they leave a bit of trash behind and, you know, maybe if some of them were involved in tidying up too, they have, might have a bit of skin in the game and make less mess at the outset. And obviously there, there are other things that the commission is responsible for. There seems to be some responsibility for the waterways. As a stern man, you get to see some interesting things getting hauled up on the, on the hauler and maybe, and I've recognized this is kind of fanciful, but maybe if we could get the cooperation of some of the commercial lobsmen and fishermen, reporting where there is ghost gear lying around the harbor, which is not gear they've abandoned, it's gear that's been taken away from them by the weather. Maybe we could work out how to get some of those plastic ropes out of the harbor, recycle them. You know, it's, it's a pie in the sky idea, but, but perhaps we might think about it. So some ideas to try out, perhaps run through the committee, see if they're workable. As, as union chair at my last job in London, which was the International Planned Parenthood Federation, I found one of the best ways to innovate was to experiment and recognize that it might not work, but try it. And then if it works, that's great. And if it doesn't, you can say, well, we tried this thing and that didn't, that wasn't effective and you move on to trying something else. So I look forward to working with my colleagues on the commission and I hope that with them we'll be able to assist the various city departments that we're charged to, to work with and, and the volunteers and help make Gloucester a little bit cleaner. Thanks.
Thank you, Barnaby. Is there any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir.
Councillor Grow.
I was going to say the same thing. I just, I want to say that I, it's been a very long time since I've seen the level of community-wide support that you received in your nomination. Genuinely is a thankless job. Nobody, nobody really wants to be the one to take the tiger by the tail there on that one, but you've gotten a lot of letters praising your. a lot of letters praising your keen intellect, your willingness to listen to people, and to deliver receipts when necessary. And I think that you're going to be a great addition to this Commission.
Thank you. Gloucester is full of great people.
Counselor Nolan.
Barnaby, we're actually blessed tonight to have two people that are being appointed to Commissions or Committees that have put proof forward that you're willing to work, both of you. It's amazing of how much stuff you see on the side of the roads in Gloucester, and in every community. It's not a Gloucester problem. And I love the idea that you put up that, you know, we can try something different, and it may not work, but we can always say we tried. And if you don't try something, then you don't achieve your goals. And I'm extremely happy to have you on this Commission. And we do need to find some other members of this Commission to meet your quorum. So it's very important if anybody can reach out to anybody who'd like to be on the Clean City Commission, because I think with a spark plug and a spitfire like Barnaby, there's no telling what, what can be done. And I'm excited about this. I'm really excited, and I hope that we can get you a quorum and, and get to work. And I, I love the way that you're already thinking about working with other Committees and other city departments to come together with an idea to make it what you said. I went to Gloucester, and I can't believe how beautiful this town in New England is. And that's something I'm, I'm really proud that you said, and I'm, I'm gonna hold you to that.
Oh, I know.
Help you find some people to get on this board that are willing to work. There is a lot of other Committees in town. You have the One Hour Gang, you have the different work areas. I know that Counselor Gilman has done cleanups, Counselor Worthley has done cleanups, Donna Adaranzi, Bob Gillis, and, you know, let's get motivated. Let's clean it, and let's educate people that, you know, throwing something out the window is bad. It, it is bad. And thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
So, having worked with Barnaby on different projects, I can attest to the fact that he rolls up his sleeves and he goes to work. Motivated, excited, dedicated, loves our city, all the characteristics that are really important. So I'm really looking forward to you getting appointed and getting this job done. Your t-shirt is wonderful, Be Clean, and I'm thinking I might even get you one of those new little mugs or something that say Be Clean, which I know that Nina Goodick is a potter, and she takes care of some of those. But really appreciate you stepping up, and most importantly, I appreciate how much you love our city and want to do what's best. So thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes. Thank you, Barnaby. Firstly, for stepping up to do this. As you know, the Clean City Commission doesn't have a quorum still. They, there's, I think, three members. The last meeting was March 2020. Residents, businesses, visitors, we deserve all to have a clean city. So ideas that you might have to consent more people to volunteer, not financially consent them, but motivate them to. And like you said, everyone does a little bit. It's, what's the phrase, many hands make light work. There's a lot of work to be done. Now, there was a, I've never seen this many emails of support for you, and you're obviously well-liked. There were some people raising questions. I think you're aware of that. We've talked about it. I really feel strongly that sometimes you are very passionate about your positions on things, and I love that energy. But sometimes, it comes across a little strong. We've talked about this. I think you know what I'm referring to. But I think where we have a Commission that has no members on it, who are asking you to help clean the city, I don't know that there's any reason to be at all concerned that your passion won't be aligned with cleaning the city. And I welcome your board. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Grace.
Hey, Barnaby. Got a few things. First of all, I was a stay-at-home parent, stay-at-home mom for 12 years, best job in the world. So kudos for that. Secondly, I'm all for taking out the garbage. There's a lot of it needs to go. We won't get into what, but, you know. You and I have had a conversation, and I think, as Jeff mentioned, there were a few people that were in opposition to this. And I think that if these people were to have a conversation with you, the person, rather than you, the Facebook face, they would feel differently. And I think this might be a good time to throw an olive branch out to some of these people, to perhaps ask them to get on the Commission and help you. It might be a good place to start.
Sure.
Counselor Majota.
Barnaby, you have my support. Getting to know you these past few years, you're very passionate. Your t-shirt says it all. You want to be clean and keep Gloucester going. And let's hope to get this Commission filled and ready to go, you know, sooner than later. So you have my support.
Thanks.
Counselor Benson.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Barnaby, for stepping up, and thank you for, you radiate a love for this community. And, you know, Be Clean is, it's, you're saying it all there. And there is, of course, a need, and I look forward to you and others helping to get more folks on this Commission, on this Commission and getting it going. And I think with some of the other comments that were said, people aren't always going to agree, we're going to get into heated arguments, and that's part of democracy, that's part of being part of a community, and learning to agree, to disagree, or just stepping back. So I have no concern there, and thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
Thank you for letting me speak twice. I'll be very brief. Another component of the Clean City Commission is the opportunity to look at different processes that could be improved. I know when Ainsley Smith was the Chair, she had been working on looking at ways that we could replace our green barrels with covered tops and figure out how we could get discounts from our local hardware stores to sell them as a, as an alternative to the green bins, which don't have covers. So those are the types of things that you can also look at, because, you know, your board is a volunteer board, but it, it can make recommendations to the mayor's office, which is Public Works, and come up with some suggestions as well. Because those things are really, are very much a root cause to a lot of that extra trash that we're seeing. And so that's just another little niche in this some board that we hope that you will be appointed to very shortly. Thank you.
I'm sure we will get on it.
Barnaby, thank you for stepping up forward on this. I don't want you to have undue pressure put upon you. You are just a member of the board. This is, these are mayoral appointees. So that is, it is not your job to go out and recruit. It's, you know, you could, you do have, the outpouring of support for you was amazing, and, I mean, just amazing in the volume. So it, obviously, you have the community support behind you on this. You have, you have devoted much of your time to the betterment of Gloucester, and I think you will be an excellent addition, and hopefully, the mayor will, will find other. And you can whisper in people's ears, but there's no pressure on you to, to, to fill these board seats. So, and thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm very grateful for all the support that I've had. I was quite touched.
And we have a Committee report, please.
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council appoint Barnaby Prentigast to the Gloucester Clean City Commission, term to end 215-27, and I absolutely move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. All, all those imposed, sorry. The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Thank you, Barnaby.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Counselor, is there any member who would like to pull an item off of the consent agenda? Accept a motion to move the agenda as is?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Counselor Worthley, seconded by Counselor Gilman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The April 4th, 2024 Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report.
Take it away, Counselor Memhard.
Thank you very much, Council President. We have five matters from our April 4th Budget and Finance Committee meeting for your consideration. The first matter is a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services requesting acceptance of the state formula grant in the amount of $143,780. And if you choose, I'll go ahead and read the motion.
Please.
On a motion by myself, Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council accept under Mass General Law 4453A, a Massachusetts Fiscal Year 2024 Council on Aging Formula Grant allocation from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs in the amount of $143,780. There is no local matching requirement for the state grant, and the grant period is from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. And I so move.
Second.
Is there anyone from the Administration that would like to speak on this, this item? Seeing none, it's pretty self-explanatory. It's-
Counselor.
Counselor Memhard, are you going to give a Committee report?
I, I can just add to the, this, this is a regular thing. On, on the other hand, as our Director of Elder Services, Elise Sinagra, took great pleasure in explaining, the state formula for awarding this grant has been increased on a per-person basis from $12 to $14 per elder served within the community. And so this represents an increase in funding, which will be, the, the rate is now set for another 10 years, as I understand it. She did stress the importance of being able to capture the number of seniors in Gloucester who use the services of the, of the senior center, of the Rosebaker Senior Center. And one issue they have is that some people use access of the back door, which is convenient to the parking lot, rather than using the front door, which has a check-in scanner to register people as they actually come into the door. And this affects the data collection of the population that they're serving. So one item that Elise is working with the Administration to direct some of this new funding towards is a second scanner at the other entrance to the facility to more accurately capture and reflect the number of seniors within our community who are using the services there.
Very good. Counselor Worthley.
Yes, I'd just like to add one thing. Our fiscal year runs July 1st to June 30th, and oftentimes, we see a list of departments on a bi-weekly basis that are underfunded or behind schedule. This is a grant that comes in, and the timing of this is such that this fulfills a lot of that discrepancy in the budget, 100 and, what is it, 143,000. So that will probably take the senior center and the Elder Affairs Office off that list. And it's really just a timing thing. And I think that's something that, you know, as we get deeper into the budget season, we have to reflect that things are accounted for in the times that we receive them versus the time that expenses go out. And this makes that department whole. I think that the additional $15,000, as Counselor Memhard mentioned, is going to make a big difference for being able to keep track of who's using the services. So it will actually perpetuate more funding down the road. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Gilman.
So I just have a administrative question to ask on the motion. It says that the grant period is from July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024. Is that-
Correct.
Is that the, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And it is, historically, this one comes in, and that's as, as Counselor Worthley alluded to, that this account, the, the Council on Aging account, it, it does, for the senior center, it is in deficit for, if you run it out the year. But then, this always comes in, and it, what, what these, this, this grant funds, the activities and volunteer coordinator, the video productions coordinator, and partial support for the wages of our outreach coordinator and senior clerk. So it's in, it's in, majority of this is in salaries, and the addition, the additional funding that we're going to get for the next 10 years is, is being used in other ways. And each year, the Director will find excellent ways to, to do this, and we'll hear about this again right about this time next year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next.
Second item from Budget and Finance this evening is a memorandum from the purchasing agent regarding a draft contract, contract number 24120, for the Gloucester House sign lease location. And reading the motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the disposition by means of a lease as provided in sign-location lease agreement number 24120 for the Gloucester House sign lease at 45 Rogers Street between the City of Gloucester and the Gloucester House Restaurant LLC pursuant to the terms and condition stated therein. Said term is to be five years from January 1st, 2024, to December 31st, 2028, and I so move.
Second.
I see we have Gary Johnstone here this evening, who could speak to any questions that the counselors may have. I guess you're going to be sparing any questions on this one. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
There's a question, Counselor-
I just had a question.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. I, I should have, I should have been more animated, even though I'm very animated all the time, but it's okay.
All right, we'll have to rescind that vote for a moment.
I just had a quick question. So, like, so the lighting portion, like, when is it lit and when is it not lit, if that makes sense? Okay. 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 Well, if, yeah, if we can find that and give it to me, that would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
I was gonna say that the sign meets the sign regulations. So you could find the ordinance and then determine if it's not meeting that, but it does. I also want to add, just for commentary, the Assessors' Office did a review of comparable types of cities and towns that do this, and this is the going rate, as I understood it at the B&amp;F meeting. Thank you.
Gary, could you use your microphone?
There are, I, I looked primarily just in Gloucester, you know, because that's where our sign is located. There are not a lot of signs that get leased, because they're usually in tight situations. We do have some billboards in town and a couple sign locations that actually leased out. And that's what I looked at for the analysis.
Do you believe that this is a reasonable rate to charge?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I mean, we're not likely to find someone else to use this same location. I mean, obviously, the sign would have to be changed, but it's, it's specific to the orientation of the, the businesses that are at, behind that parking lot.
I guess it also should be noted that you told us that the city on the, the piece of land there, the city also uses part of it for one of the charging stations. So this is kind of more air rights than it is land rights.
Yeah, it's for the, for the sign itself. It's not, they can't put something down on the ground. The, the structure itself uses up most of a parking space. We do have an electric charging station situated there as well right now.
Thank you. Are we ready now for the vote? Everybody all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to nothing. Next, Counselor Memhard.
Item number three from Budget and Finance this evening is a motion for myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Our Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the disposition by means of a lease as provided in lease agreement number 24121 for the Wytham Street parking area at 99 Thatcher Road between the City of Gloucester and the Good Harbor Beach Incorporated pursuant to the terms and conditions stated therein. Said term is to be for three years from May 1st, 2024, to April 30th, 2027, and I so move.
Second.
I just comment that this is a-
Motion made by- Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley.
This is a renewal of an existing long-term lease. It permits seasonal use to buy the Good Harbor Beach Inn to reserve 11 parking places along Witherm Street behind the Good Harbor Beach for their use.
All right, counselors, do we have questions for Mr. Johnstone? Everybody's good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, please, Mr. Memhard.
Item number four is a memorandum from our EMS coordinator regarding the Gloucester Fire Department's ambulance billing and collection policy. There are two motions. The first, on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Gross, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council approve the Gloucester Fire Department billing and collection policy as is presented, as was presented by the Captain EMS Coordinator and approved by the mayor, and further to approve the proposed fee structure attached to and incorporated into the policy effective July 1st, 2024. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. And before we move on, I would like to thank Mr. Johnstone for being here this evening. Counselor Memhard.
Nothing further to add to this. The EMS coordinator and the chief gave us a clear presentation on this matter and the following one as well.
Both the chief and Kevin Gargan are here this evening to answer questions on this. This sometimes can be a little confusing. If counselors have questions, now is your opportunity. We have the experts. No? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. And I'd like to thank the chief and I think it's Lieutenant Gargan for that. And next, we have a memorandum. Counselor Memhard.
The second part of this motion relating to the EMS coordinator and the Fire Department's billing and collection policy is a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, and Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City Council authorizes the write-off of $597,534 in uncollectible outstanding ambulance billing. And I so move.
Second. Question, Counselor Grow.
I'm just wondering if we could get a read from the chief on where this stands in terms of the regularity of write-offs. Five hundred, it's almost $600,000. Is that a typical write-off every year? And what is, what could we do to diminish that somewhat? I mean, I don't know if it has an effect on the actual budget every year or not.
It doesn't, yes. So this is on par with what we've seen, you know, since my time here, which is coming up on 12 years, believe it or not. But, you know, based on, you know, the increases in rates and costs and so forth, this is what we routinely see. This is aged bills that are uncollectible for a whole host of reasons. You know, the patients were never identified or can be tracked down. You know, they may have not, you know, survived the event that got them to the hospital, and there is no estate or billing ability to collect. So some of this stuff is in litigation sometimes of car accidents and injuries. And while we say that this is written off, these do stay open on the books for our billing company. And if they do receive any remittance from these, which we get, it's not a lot. And I'm not going to tell you that. It's going to lower that by much. But, you know, any billing that does come in because of litigation that is resolved does still come back to the city, and we see that come in, and that cleans up that piece of it. But this is really a process that we do to assist the auditor in keeping the city's books clean, honestly. Because, you know, this debt has gone over the reasonable amount of time for the lapse that our billing company takes. We've done. Yep.
Wait a second.
He can't hear us. It's all right.
We're having problems here. He can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yep. I can.
Yeah, we don't sound either.
I get this. This do not show ours.
Can you hear me now?
There we go. Give us a second here, chief. It's funny thing is, we can't, I can't hear you.
Well, you predicted that at the beginning of that meeting. We said if there are technical difficulties, we can continue. Somebody kicked something under the table? Yeah, I hit a thread over here.
Control, alt, and delete.
How about now?
I can hear you, you can hear me. We just can't hear in the auditorium.
Oh, I got you.
So we're just going to, we're going to try to rebooting the system.
You coming back up? Hello?
Yep.
It got spooky. That's right. Grace is rebooting everything.
Grace, welcome to the. Yeah, we had to find out what happened.
This never happened with Joanne, I'm just saying.
I'm glad we're amusing. Jason, you have now blown up my head screen.
Cool, how'd I do that? I was saying, I was saying I'm talking.
Good camera.
Donna, you've unmuted yourself.
See you, Sop.
All right.
Council President?
Are you?
Sorry to keep you waiting here.
Could we make sure we disclose the record that no business was done, nothing, no conversations were had?
No, no business. We went on and the minutes will reflect that we had a however many minute interruption, but we, as everything worked out, and I will not hit the switch again, we're back in business.
Outstanding. Well, basically where I was at is that, yeah, this is, this is fairly routine, you know, for, for all EMS and even medical entities to have this kind of write-off, you know, where billables are far higher than what the collections that are possible, both in the amounts, because Medicare, Medicaid, they, they have set rates. So, you know, we bill at the rates that we bill at, they pay, you know, the rates that they're willing to pay, and then, you know, the difference is never, never billed back to those patients. That's not legal. So, the culmination of all of those things leads to these uncollectible debts that, that has to be satisfied, to clean up the books and, you know, put it in the right place so, so the auditor can move on in, in his process.
That's an excellent synopsis. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Council Worthley.
If I could ask a question to kind of help our, all of our understanding. Chief Smith, thank you for bringing this to us. Do we ever deny emergency services to anybody based on whether they have insurance?
Sorry about that. I turned my mic off. Yeah, no, that, that absolutely not legal, not, not what we're here for, number one. I mean, the billing, the billing that we collect is, is a great offset to the cost of delivering this service. It's not a great way to kind of, kind of compare it, but similar to trash bags, you know, if you, if you're using a service more frequently, given your circumstances, then, then there's kind of that expectation that, that that's the offset to pay the cost of doing that, that every taxpayer is paying the base rate to keep the fire department operational and available, and those that are using EMS services from the fire department, because most everyone has healthcare insurance or is available through the state or various programs, and in cases where folks can't afford it, we do have a write-off policy. So, we, we try to be comprehensive in that, in that, you know, we're, we're collecting money where it's collectible without hurting folks. Our job isn't to hurt folks, it's to help them, but this helps sustain the service for everybody.
Thank you for that. And just a follow-up question, if I may. So, when you, all the employees who are EMS certified, they're paid out of the fire department budget, whether or not you got a million calls, or one call, or zero calls for the year. So, when you do the job and bill for it, the way this works is that's additional money that goes into your account, or goes into the general fund?
Yeah. So, all of the EMS revenue goes into the general fund. We account for typically, you know, our estimates are, that go through the budget process and are approved by the mayor and recommended by the CFO, are about 1.5 million a year on the income side. Now, that, you know, adjusts up and down. We've had to reduce it on rare occasion, but typically we, we meet and exceed that, that target for a revenue stream, and it's, you know, it's pretty consistent, and we, we tend to, to not have any issues on it. But, that funding as stated goes into the general fund, the fire department's operating budget for staff and salaries, you know, everything from Band-Aids to, to pads for our AEDs and monitors and all the medications that, you know, we stock that aren't billed to a patient yet, all of those things are covered under the, under the budget that we have with the fire department. So, the, the volume, the run volume and the income that it may generate, that we kind of expect that it will generate, and it's generated consistently, and we have pretty solid data, and why we project that revenue, is not something that is absolutely necessary. But, it is necessary to the degree that the city is counting on that income to the, to the tune of 1.5 million a year.
Thank you. My last question is, I'm not asking you to have data on the top of your head, but percentage-wise, are the majority of your calls for your men and women fire calls or medical calls?
Yeah. By and large, the, you know, that's industry-wide throughout the fire service and, and what we do, if you're providing a fire and EMS, about 70, give or take, percent of your time, and call volume is spent on EMS calls. Now, obviously, fire calls take much longer and many more people and resources than do an EMS call, but the, but just the hard numbers of how many calls in volume itself, about right around 70%.
The EMS work that you do is a moneymaker for the general fund essentially. Is that right?
Yeah. It's, it doesn't really make any money. I mean, if you, if you were to really
For the general fund.
break this out, yeah. So, I mean, it's bringing in 1.5 million as an offset, but if you looked at the total expense and really attributed every penny that it cost the city to operate EMS, we may be at the break-even point. We've never really assessed it at that level, because this is frankly a, a service that the community needs and demands at once, and, and we have been the best provider of that service, you know, by and large, especially given our location and the difficulties with, you know, getting, you know, EMS operations to function, because most EMS operations under a 911 system, they don't make money. They tend to lose money, and they get offset by that, that government subsidy, if you will. So, you know, that's kind of where it sits. Like I said, it's a, it's an offset to the cost of operations, but it is certainly not something that puts us in black ink versus red ink.
Thank you for that. Great work.
Council Memhard.
Chief, if I recall correctly from our discussion at Budget and Finance, there is a, there is some retroactive compensation from the state for some of this shortfall. Is that correct?
Yeah, there is, and it's, you know, it's, it's from the state program, but it, it funnels back to the federal level, you know, CMS through, through Medicare, Medicaid, and what they do. And so, we, we're seeing an evolution in that change where, you know, the rates that they pay us are no different than the rates that they pay other areas of the country in many cases, and they're working to adjust those rates based on the costs in your particular service zone. So, you know, they're, they're looking to kind of customize the rate that they'll pay us in Gloucester, and that, that, that differential, that offset that they pay out under the program that the state has, will inevitably go away and be replaced by just the rates themselves meeting the need. And, because there's a ton of paperwork and calculations and data entry that go into getting that, that funding, and it is a voluntary participation thing. We've been doing it almost since I've been here. It wasn't done previously. So, it's, you know, we bring in somewhere in the neighborhood of $350,000 a year towards that 1.5 million by participating in that program. Without it, that, that money would just, it would be an unknown to the city and was previous to us, you know, entering into that program. Matter of fact, Sanders, Sanders, the one that, that did it the first time for us.
Thank you, Sanders, and thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Now, if you do look at the BNF packet, you'll see that these, these, these debts that's being carried over range from $10 to $3,300, and there's an awful lot of unknowns in that list. So, I just wanted to point that out, that it's, it's spread out through an awful lot of participants. And thank you, Chief, for, for your explanation.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
As well.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Gargan.
If I may, the fifth and final item from Budget and Finance tonight, memorandum from our Sustainability Director, our Coordinator, regarding the HEET Kickstarter Networked Geothermal Feasibility Study. Is Gemma with us tonight?
No.
I'll go ahead and read the motion, and we can provide some background. On a motion by myself, Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the City of Gloucester accept, under Mass. General Law 4453A, a state grant for the Massachusetts Clean Energy Technology Center, or MAS CIRC, and passed through Massachusetts Home Energy Efficiency Team, HEET, for the Kickstart Massachusetts Grant Program in the amount of $50,000 for the purpose of conducting community engagement projects and to conduct feasibility studies to assess potential sites for a networked geothermal project, for networked geothermal projects. The grant period is from March 27th, 2024 through December 31st, 2024, and there is in-kind match of a limited number of staff hours, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Memhard, seconded by Councilor Worthley. Is there any report?
I, I can comment briefly, and then maybe you'd like to add to it too, because you had some insight into it. But Gemma is very excited. This is a pre-qualification application for grants for a study, which if, if constructive and positive in its outcome for us, could result in further funding. This is feasibility for a, a teamed group geothermal installation in the area of the high school and Emerson Avenue, food pantry, pathways for children. It's a very innovative project, which would sort of make a campus out of that neighborhood and serve them from a communal general geothermal installation. And this is just a preliminary application for a, a technical review for this area for Gloucester. And if it's successful, it could be very meaningful.
Yeah. It also includes the, the housing, the affordable housing at Lincoln Park. So, what this is, is a, a geothermal feasibility study for geothermal, whether or not it'd be feasible to tie in like all in one campus for this. And so, whether or not it's eligible, we'll find out, whether the feasibility study says it's a go, and then, then hopefully there'll be more development money to follow along. Usually when they fund a feasibility study, you tend to get the money. Of course, they're going to ask us for a little bit too, I'm sure. But, that's, that's what Gemma presented. Councilor Worthley.
I think we should thank Gemma for bringing this to us. We don't know the result yet, but the feasibility study will make it an option. We'll know if it's an option, and I look forward to debating that and discussing that when we get to that point. But, it's a good move, and she continues to bring, and the department continues to bring things to our attention that really are helpful. So, I'll be supporting it.
Yeah, we keep referring to her as Gemma, but Gemma Wilkins is our Sustainability Coordinator, who has brought in considerable amount of grants in her short time as a Sustainability Coordinator. Any other questions? Yes, certainly.
Thank you, Council President, and I want to just thank our Sustainability Director, Ms. Wilkins, for doing this. And we know that we're seeing across the country and across the world that geothermal is the future. So, this is very important, and it, and it does, if folks read it, it also talks about how there's pilot programs from National Grid as well. So, doing like pilot programs for networked geothermal projects in our region. So, this is very exciting stuff, and I want to just thank her and everyone involved on this, and I look forward to supporting it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Councilor Memhard. Councilor Nolan, we have one little item under O&amp;A that requires no action, but if you, there's anything you'd like to comment on that?
There's no input tonight, no action required. The only thing we do have is we have a CC 2024-10 for a public hearing on April 23rd, 2024, amendment GCO, Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22 to 70.1, resident sticker parking only by adding Farrington Avenue on a northerly side from its intersection with Eastern Point Boulevard in an easterly direction to its intersection with Atlantic Road. And what that is, is on, on Farrington Avenue, we had some people that are looking to cancel or remove parking from one side. The issue turned out to be very tense, and looking for solutions, being a beach that a lot of local people like to use. So, now they've came, they have come forward and asked if we could do something with resident sticker only, which makes sense. It still leaves things available for residents to use Niles' Beach. There's a lot of people that don't like to use the larger beaches, because of the crowds, the, the music, the different things that happen. It could have a winged chic where Niles is more quiet and better to view the children.
That'll be a public hearing on the 23rd of April. Is that correct?
Thank you. Councilor Gro.
I just, if I could, I took a ride through there and noticed there's only one sign up on the entire side. That, can we get a clarification of what exists currently on the ground and where, where the lines are, especially around the Seine Field?
So, we did ask, that was brought up at, at, in its administration, I did ask Mike Hill to look into that, and we will be doing some more information of where it is. Some people said there's already a resident-only situation down by the Seine Fields. I want to clarify that, and we'll have that all worked out before the public hearing, and we'll make sure it's in the pocket.
Councilor Benson.
Just a question, Vice President. Resident sticker parking, is that beach sticker, or is it like a resident-only sticker? Just to clear it, just for point of clarity.
All righty. So, we went through this again at O&amp;A. There is a resident sticker. You don't have to have a beach sticker for a resident parking only. And there's something we need to embed somewhere in the front page of our city website, because people ask this every year. A, a beach sticker allows you to go to Good Harbor, Wing Ashique, and Stage Four without paying for parking, just for the sticker. A resident sticker is, is far cheaper and allows you to park in all areas that are resident-only. There are no areas in Gloucester that are resident-only by street or neighborhood. A resident is a resident. There are some people that, that label their roads as resident-only of said road. That's actually illegal. So, I'm not going to point them out, but they're there. We've talked about it before. But, that is the beach sticker status. And while I'm at it, the City of Gloucester starts issuing beach stickers in May, because it's already come out on Facebook today. So, while we're talking about beach and resident stickers, the city does start working with that in May.
Councilor Memhard.
To follow up on Councilor Nolan's overview, which is very helpful, the resident-only stickers are provided through the Treasurer's Office, as opposed to beach stickers, which is handled by the Clerk's Office. As opposed to beach stickers, which is handled by the Clerk's Office.
Beach stickers are not handled by the Clerk's Office. They're a seasonal department that is run through the Treasurer's Office.
Thank you. Good for you.
Counselor Grow.
I I just want to make sure I understand. A beach sticker is valid in resident only parking or no?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
I am under that belief also. We may need clarification for that. Does anyone from the administration be able to clarify that?
I'm sorry, didn't hear the question, Council President.
Um, are beach stickers, do they work in resident only spaces?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
For clarity, the other way doesn't work. If you have a resident sticker.
The other way does not work as a beach sticker for.
That's correct. You cannot get into the, so we actually reviewed this after the last meeting after O N A because I was. I want to make sure I was clear. So the beach sticker ordinance specifically says that is for the pay beaches, right? So Wingish Chic, Stage 4 Park, and Good Harbor Beach. They will also pass for a resident sticker. A resident sticker will not get you into the paid parking lots.
Money will, but.
Money will.
Okay, thank you.
Is that helpful?
Take many of the beaches and you'll.
Well, you have to pre-register.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. I may have a question, but I'll ask later on.
Well, there's no action being taken on this. This is just reporting out. Okay, planning and development, Counselor Grow. Couple of things to report on.
Yeah, very quickly.
There's no action.
There's no action on anything tonight. We had a special event application, Event 24-11. Request for road closures regarding the Gloucester Education Foundation Citywide Arts Festival on March, excuse me, May, May 17th. 2024 and May 18th, 2024. That's down here on Warren. It is going to be both. Actually, it's only going to be the 18th that they're going to be closing that road. We had a, we had a correction on that. But the rain date will be May 19th. So Saturday, May 18th is the big day for the arts festival down on Warren Street from City Hall. Two, we had a, we had a public hearing continued and I did send out a note to folks. Counselors, if you have double poll requests, concerns about things in your in your wards, please let me know. This is the perfect opportunity to drop those in their lap. And get some, get some motion on on some of these that have been outstanding. And we had a, we have a continued for a public hearing on April 23rd, but we haven't done a vote at the subcommittee level. We did have a site visit for the P and D subcommittee of this particular application. My apologies for not inviting the whole council. If you if you genuinely feel that you need a site visit, I'm sure we can arrange one. It's relatively small installation of a pergola on a roof that has no, it's not overlooking anybody. So if you need to see it, we can do that. There are pictures. Just let me know and I will talk to the applicant about arranging that. And that is it for us.
Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024, number 10, amend GCO Chapter 10, Waterways Administration, Article 4, mooring. Public landings and city-owned commercial marinas, Section 10-51. Regulation of moorings, subsection E fees regarding an increase in daily fee for transient moorings. Increase in launch fee, addition of ride ticket books, 20 ride tickets for $140 for permitted mooring holders.
I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Council President, this is Donna Crocker. I'm Chair of the Waterways Board. I'm the one that put together the survey of all. Of the mooring holders in the harbor. We had a really good response from them. And this was a lot of work on the Waterways Board to come up with a solution that would. Increase the revenue for the launches. There's a huge gap between revenue and cost. And share that increased cost amongst visitors using. Transient moorings and mooring holders and give mooring holders a different option for. Using the launch and paying for services. One of the things that we did. You know, query them about was how often they actually use the launch and separated those. Numbers between people that use it infrequently and giving them a chance to. To buy the books of tickets. That also would include them being able to buy books of tickets for people that meet them out at their boats. And then we increased the usage with the the season pass. Used to be one ride per day. So we made that unlimited. Anybody that buys a season pass can use the launch as much as they want.
All right, is there anything? The, okay, so is there anyone who want to would like to speak? Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Any no hand raised? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Anyone in the room? Anyone online now that we're back? And not seeing any hands. Is there any communications, Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay, now it is questions for counselors to the applicant or staff. Can we bring Donna on camera? Ms. Crocker, can you, you open your camera while you're, if there's any questions from the counselors? Do we have questions? Or Ms. Crocker?
I have a question, but off Ms. Crocker. It'd be for us to discuss. So we can do it at any point.
All right, so that's questions of the staff or Ms. Crocker and Ms. Crocker. And seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Now. Counselor Nolan, would you give a committee report or read the motion?
On a motion, a motion by Counselor Gray, seconded by Counselor Majota.
Could you? Yeah, thank you.
Seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed to recommend the City Council amend. The Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Waterways Administration, Article 4. Morons, public landings, and city-owned commercial marinas. Section 10-51, regulation of moorings as follows. E, fees. The fee for each type of moor shall be established by the City Council. Fees for personal moor shall be charged by the length of a vessel at the rate of $8 per foot. For city residents and taxpayers in a rate of $10 a foot for non-residents. The fee for transient moorings shall be $200 each. A daily fee of delete 60, add 65. Shall be charged every vessel that utilizes a municipal moor used for transient boats. Operated by the Harbor Master. The daily rental for transient boats shall include the services of the Gloucester Launch. During regular service hours. Fees for 10A float permits shall be in the amount of $1 per square foot up to the maximum of $400. Fees for the use of the Gloucester Launch shall be delete $5, add $10. Per person, one-way trip with children 12 years of the age, younger, free. A season pass for permitted mooring holders within the boundaries of the Gloucester Harbor Launch. With unlimited daily use for up to four passengers will cost $350. Add permitted mooring holders may purchase a book of 20 ride tickets for $140. Each ticket is good for one person, one way. And I so move.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. And questions may be asked during this period also. Donna Crocker, we can consider her staff because she's representing the Waterways Board. Counselor Nolan.
It's not really a question. It's more a discussion. Donna has put a lot of work into this and brought a lot of information to the ordinance administration on how this works. They've worked with a lot of the launch users. There's options to pay for a yearly pass or for buying a book of tickets to use at their time as they feel fit. The expenses to run. The Class A operation that we do run with our launch comes with some expenses. And I think this is still below other areas which are mostly. Commercial and not public launch systems. And I think that this was a lot of hard work by her. I will support this and I think it's very fair. And I did ask that they would communicate with their users about the increases. So there was no surprise. So people have been notified through email and different listings that this is something that's going to happen. And I think it's fairly cut and dry and thank you, Donna, for all your hard work.
I have a question.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, first again, thank you, Donna. I'm very impressed with your work and the response you got from the public and the mooring holders on this. And I I think we all trust your work. The Waterways Board has come a long way over the years and so has the Harbor Masters Office. I think it's a top notch operation. And the only question I have is if we should have referred this to Budget and Finance too. Rule that they used to say is there's a dollar number, dollar sign on it goes to BNF as well. I'm not going to hold it up on that. I think we have enough discussion here to talk with the numbers. But last year we had some changes that we made that went both to the ordinance administration committee. This is an internal issue, Donna. It's not anything to do with the content of the hearing. We had some changes.
Let's keep to this and then, you know, if there's ordinance discussion, we can have that another time.
So what I'm saying is we probably should have, and maybe for future reference, we just refer things to both Budget and Finance and ordinance administration.
We'll discuss that, but let's talk about what's here now.
Oh, I mean, that's what I'm discussing, I guess. So what's here before us, I support and I'll be voting for it.
Thank you. Other questions? I don't know, Donna, if you want to illustrate what you learned last year about. Day users were seeing that it was cheaper than buying the the pass because you've. Somehow it was overlooked that that would be a, I guess you don't need to comment. I sort of did it for you. That last year they discovered that day users were, were, it was more affordable, no matter how many times you used it than buying a season pass. So and I think that this, that the 20 ride tickets will be a great thing. And and your work on the survey was nothing that was easy and simple. And is very much in depth and greatly appreciated by us.
It did show, it did show that, you know, that the launch service is really valued in the city. And the addition of the second launch cut the times down for voters tremendously. And that people really value that service that comes out of the Harbor Masters Office.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. I'd like to. Because as I've been read, as I've been reading up on, thank you, Donna, very much. On for your hard work.
Thank you all.
As I've been reading up on. Suspending the rules, it actually requires a two-thirds vote and I would like to suspend the rules right now. Counselor Gilman needs to get off to a prior commitment. That we go out of order and we take the proclamation from City Council next. So Counselor Benson, I don't know, is there a motion that needs to be? We already adopted it, correct? Did we? Oh, vote to suspend the rules, right, sorry. All those in favor of suspending?
Aye.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay, thanks. Motion made by me, seconded by Counselor Worthley, I mean Counselor Grow. And I'm all over the place, sorry. I need a switch. Yeah, moved out. And all those in favor, nine to zero to suspend the rules. All right, and Counselor Benson, why don't you make the motion that says move the City Council?
Okay.
Last page.
Last page, sorry.
Right above individual.
I know we're out of order and will I read, could I read a portion of the proclamation or after I move the motion or? Is that possible?
Yeah, move the motion first.
Okay. Proclamation from the City Council and the mayor regarding endorsement of the working definition of antisemitism. Established by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. And then should I read the?
You need a second.
Okay, second?
Second.
All right.
Oh, oh, yes, read where it says move.
Sorry, I'm a little.
Not in bold.
I hope people, yeah, know.
I wasn't paying close enough attention.
Thank you. Move that the City Council approved the proclamation. And with the mayor endorsed the working definition of antisemitism. Established by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. Sorry, I was a little.
Second.
Trying to. An ISO move.
Second. Uh, move by Counselor Benson, seconded by Counselor Majota. Would you like to comment on this further, Counselor Benson?
Uh, yeah, I was wondering if it's possible to maybe read a portion of the proclamation.
Sure.
Sure. So I'll just quickly and then I'll read a quick brief of the proclamation. But I brought this forward since 2023, the United States has witnessed a staggering. Increase in antisemitic incidents instances with reports showing a rise of approximately 400%. The Anti-Defamation League has documented this troubling trend of antisemitism within the country. And in October 2023 alone, there were 388 increases in antisemitic hate crimes. Alongside Rabbi Kudin of the Temple of Avatahim, I have worked on a proclamation for the City of Gloucester. To endorse the working definition on antisemitism, which I am honored to present to the mayor and the city council. And I hope my fellow city councilors and the mayor will consider signing this proclamation with me today. And I'll quickly just read and just read a couple of paragraphs of the of the proclamation. And I'll begin with the first paragraph. Whereas we may, we must never forget the horrific events of the Holocaust and the six million Jewish lives lost. During one of the most abhorrent events in human history. And I'm going to go to the, quickly to just bat a few paragraphs down. And whereas in October of 2023, FBI Director Christopher Way. Warned that the US is seeing historic levels of antisemitism, accounting for something nearly 60% of all religious. Based hate crime. Additionally, as I alluded to earlier. In 2023, the ADL reported that antisemitic instances has reached. Their historic number in any two-month period since the organization began tracking in 1979. With a 337% increase and over a, over a 61-day period in 2023. Jewish Americans experienced an average of nearly 34 in antisemitic instances per day. And I will just say quickly, and I'm going to just read what we'll adopt. But this has been adopted by cities such as Lynn, New Bedford, Beverly, Peabody, Newton. And also by Governor Charlie Baker in 2020, 2022. The State of Massachusetts endorsed this working definition. And I'll just say, whereas the City of Gloucester, the City Council. And the mayor can play a powerful role in promoting the values of tolerance and pluralism. And protecting citizens from acts of racism, bigotry, and hate motivated by discrimination. Animus including antisemitism. Whereas, an essential tool in combating antisemitism is the ability to define antisemitism. In each of its multiple forms. And whereas, on May 26, 2016. The International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance met. And adopted the, this definition, which I will read. It's a non-legally binding working definition. And in the proclamation, folks at home that read this, it has been adopted by 35 member states of the UN. It has also been adopted by the EU and also by the US State Department. And the definition is antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews. Which may be expressed as hatred toward. And the definition is antisemitism is a certain perception of Jews, which may be expressed as hatred towards Jews. Rhetorical and physical manifestations of antisemitism are directed towards Jews or non-Jewish individuals and/or their property, toward Jewish community institutions and religious facilities. And we have seen antisemitic instances across the North Shore in recent years. Now, therefore, we, the Gloucester City Council and Mayor Berger, hereby proclaim that Gloucester endorses the working definition of antisemitism established by the International Holocaust Remembrance Alliance. I urge all citizens of the City of Gloucester to take cognizant of this definition and the threat that antisemitism poses to our community and to our democracy, because antisemitism is a threat to democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Benson. Any other councilors like to comment? Council Grow.
I want to thank Dylan for bringing this to the council and to the city. I'm just scanning through here some news reports recent. And I think something that's terrifying to imagine is that, based on some surveys that have been done by news organizations, anywhere from 20% to 25% of American youth believes that the Holocaust was a myth, that it did not happen, that it was, that it's a fantasy. And we keep that in context, the fact that there are people living today who went through that hell. So those people are not a myth. Those people exist, and they are here in our country, they're here all over the world. You know, one of the chant of Holocaust remembrance is never forget and never again. And I just want to expand that a little bit and say that that belongs to every group of people out in the world, that when we stand by and allow genocide and crimes against humanity continue, we are, we are sullying the memory of the people who died during the Holocaust and that we have an obligation as, as Americans, we have an obligation as human beings to stand up, to voice outrage when these things happen, wherever they happen throughout the world. And we need to do that, because if we don't, we are going to lose ourselves as human beings.
Councilor Grace.
Thank you, Dylan, for bringing this forward and for your passion that you feel for this. It's truly remarkable and appreciated. What man is capable of is very, very frightening, what man can do to fellow men. It's disgraceful, it's disgusting. And if we do not remember and we do not hold these people in our hearts, it will repeat itself, because history always repeats itself when we do not learn from it. So thank you.
Councilor Nolan.
Thank you, Council Benson. This goes forward for, for everything. I mean, they just had the Holocaust exhibit in Boston, and it brings a lot of memories, families that we're all part of that went to war. And not only for property, but for the rights of freedom of religion. This is a great thing to support tonight, and it can be used in all types of fears. In Salem, we just had an attack on a satanic church. It may not be my groove before it, but it's certainly someone's right to believe who they want to believe in and support and do what they want to do. And they should be able to do that without fear of retribution from another person for them being themselves. So as the world changes, I like to think it changes for the better. But I do think that we do have some bad people out there. And to have this that we support is a start, but it needs to be put into every aspect of life that people do what they believe and how they want to do it. And if they're left alone, it's up to their own discretion, and people shouldn't be judging people for what they believe. And like I said, this is a start, and I do appreciate you bringing this forward. Thank you.
Council Gilman.
I too want to echo what everyone said, that thank you, Dylan, for putting this forward. My husband's Jewish, my family is Jewish, Bernie Cohen, that whole family. I've lived this with them over the years, and it's, and it's just really heartfelt. So I am really proud that we're standing tall as a council, and I urge us to sign this unanimously tonight. Thank you, Dylan.
Councilor Melo.
I would just like to join my fellow councilors in thanking Dylan for his initiative in bringing this to us. It's something that we need to state loud and state clearly and state as unanimously as we possibly can. And I join all my fellow councilors in that recognition and signing this and moving forward and making this a part of Gloucester community. Thank you.
Council Worthley.
I just want to thank Council Benson and commend him. It's always interesting when the youngest among us is helping us all remember a history lesson. And as much as we want to condemn hate, I think we learned just two weeks ago, it was, I think Lauren Riley, who also said we should be shining a light in the darkness, right, and focusing on being pro-Jewish and pro-people. And I think that we all support this, and I'm happy to do that. And I think we should go another step at some point to see what we can do to expand it even further. Thank you.
Dylan, thank you for bringing this forward. Yes, thank you, Dylan. This is a very good thing that you have, that you have done, bringing this forward. It really does need to be. Unfortunately, we need to be reminded. And, and doing this puts it in the forefront again, and hopefully this will make somewhat of a difference. And I'm glad to be very much of a part of this. And thank you for, for all your hard work and for bringing this forward.
Say something quickly.
Please.
Thank you, my fellow councilors. And also, I want to thank Council Grow for bringing, speaking about survivors. And this past weekend, I met a survivor in Rockport, the Jewish community on the Cape Ann had an event, and they brought her, and her book is going to be released next month. And then actually, Council Nolan bringing up the exhibit that's in Boston. I was there on Saturday for about four hours, and I encourage everyone to visit that if they can get up, get down to Boston. I almost said get up, because we always tend to say that. But finally, I think it, this will give us the tool as a community to identify it through this working definition and just understanding the challenge, the fundamental challenges that antisemitism poses to tolerance and human dignity and that underpin our democracy, educational institutions, workplaces, and religious institutions. So I want to thank you all for your words. And everyone, please, if you can, home, read this proclamation. And I also finally will say thank you to Rabbi Kudin of Temple of Avatahim for spending a lot of time with me on the phone and also helping me write this proclamation. Thank you, Rabbi.
Council Grow.
Just like to recognize my new Alves and, I believe, Wanda Cohen. Thank you. You're welcome to the Human Rights Commission, our representative is the Human Rights Commission. And also Lola Prendergast is online, also a member of the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you.
And I did share this with the Human Rights Commission, and they were eager, after sharing it, they were eager to come here. And I want to thank them for coming here and being committed to erasing hate in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. And we have a document to be signed at the end of the evening. And we want to give it to Council Gilman, who is, has to leave us early.
She's taking the money and running.
We're going to, we're going to continue on. I think, do we need to have the motion reread? Do we need to have the motion reread on this? So we're, we're back to a council vote? Okay. All right, Council Grow. Yes, I, well, yes, I guess you will have to read the whole thing.
So the item before you is RZ 2024, number one, to amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, sections 5-16-12, affordable component, and 5.16.13, payment in lieu. That was continued from March 26th. The public hearing was closed, and it's continued at the committee report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
It's my recollection, we were at the discussion phase and asking questions before the actual motion was being read. So that was why we delayed.
The motion had not been read yet?
I don't believe the motion had been read. We were still in the public hearing process, and I'm, my guess, the reason we delayed it was because Council Worthley had some questions that he wanted to ask of administration. So if they're there for us to ask, I believe it was Suzanne Egan. So I think that's where we are on this, and then I'm happy to read the motion.
So I think anyone who had questions, and now's the time to ask them. Council Benson.
I had questions specifically, maybe for Council Grow and maybe for the administration as a whole.
This is questions for the administration.
Okay, I'll, I'll probably, maybe I can ask the administration, and then, and then you can go. I'm just thinking, just so, since the lane, this is from some constituents. Since the new language in section 5-11 was adopted, how many new units of housing have been created, excluding those created through 40B, because of those that have separately, that have the separate affordability component? If someone can help answer that question.
Good evening, Council, Suzanne Egan, General Counsel. So I, unfortunately, I don't have that specific question. I believe your question was if, because of the adoption of section 5.11, were new houses, new housing units created, or are you asking were new affordable units created?
How many new units were created?
I apologize, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor.
Council Worthley.
Thank you, Suzanne Egan, thank you for being here tonight. I'm not going to ask you for a very specific data number, I wouldn't expect you to have it at the top of your head. But when an applicant comes to the City Council and uses or is required to have inclusionary zoning, how is that tracked in the city? Or do we track that in the city? For example, if someone has a building application and they have a certain percentage of units that are affordable.
Can we keep this to the, this, the Village Overlay District? Please, because that's what, that's what we're talking about.
The Village Overlay District change is being proposed because it doesn't align with 5.11 and looking for consistency in the ordinance. That's what was presented in the minutes and at our meeting before. So I'm trying to find out where the consistency discrepancy is on terms of how many units have been created, as Council Benson asked, but how are we tracking it? Because that's what we'll be going forward in this year.
Okay, I, I don't think that it relates to, it's a definition is the, is what it's relating to.
Okay, may I ask, if this were to pass, how would we track or do, can we track the affordable units? And is that in the Community Development Department, is it in the Planning Department? How is that tracked? Is that fair to ask on this proposal?
I don't think it's, I don't think legal actually has any, any way to answer that.
I can actually answer that question. I can, I can answer the question as to how it's tracked. So when an affordable unit is created, that is, that affordable unit is added to our subsidized housing inventory list that is kept by what was formerly known as DHCD, the Department of Community Housing Development. And that gets, that's where we determine what our proportion of affordable housing units there are in the city. And as you all know, we have that goal of a 10% affordable housing unit. So any affordable housing unit with the appropriate restriction that meets those requirements is submitted to the state and included on our subsidized housing inventory list.
I could continue. So when a unit is made affordable in perpetuity, does the City of Gloucester track that in perpetuity? Does the state track that in perpetuity? How is that sort of measured? If someone were to, 50 years later, sell a house at a higher amount than would be affordable, do we have a mechanism for tracking that?
Yes, because an affordable, the ordinance requires an affordable housing restriction to be placed. It's on the title of the property. And so anytime that property, there's a real estate transaction, that unit is encumbered by the restriction. So you only sell as much as you have, when you have an affordable housing restriction, you're conveying a portion of that, your property rights off to make sure that you only have that, all you own is the affordable housing unit versus the fair market value unit.
And again, this question might be a question for Jason, potentially, or a question of Council Grow or for legal. One of the things raised at the, I think it was the Planning Board, is the question was, looking at the summary of discussion, Council Grow explained that he found inconsistencies within the ordinance and asked the Planning Board to review this section of code and make recommendations to bring into alignment. This is partly a technical question and partly a philosophical one. The Village Overlay District was developed out of the Daler study in, I think, the year 2000. It was developed from a West Gloucester wastewater plan, wastewater management plan, and it was developed out of the Community Development Plan. And so there was specifically made a difference, a difference was made specifically to try to incent denser units, denser projects.
I got to ask you, can you have questions on the amendments that are in this?
Yes. I guess I'm explaining my question, but maybe I shouldn't explain my question first.
Yeah, yeah, get to the question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry. Give me a second. Is homogeneity, homogeneous zoning required? Is it preferred? We have, one of the reasons we're doing this is it's different than 5.11. We want 5.16 to align with that, that's the word I'm looking at here. But there's a reason why the Village Overlay District is different. And is the goal to make it homogeneous?
For the sake of clarity, can I just get this out of the way?
Please.
Okay. So, in fact, there is no fundamental change to the number of units that are created under the Village Development Overlay District. It is still 20%, 10% low income, 10% very low income. So the volume of units created has not changed at all. The only thing that is changing is effectively the termination, the sunset clause of 45 years, which we don't have in any other of our sub-development, our clusters, anything, all of our other subdivision applications, cluster development, open space recreation districts, all those are subject to 5.11. The Village Development Overlay District is a, is a, is a zoning ordinance that has never been used, has been pointed out by Solicitor Pivazza, and effectively, it's sort of been forgotten. If you ask the Planning Board, I think they're finding regularly that there's a lot of language in that ordinance that is clumsy, is not very well planned out. And I think, speaking not for them, but I would guess that if they had their druthers, they would rewrite this thing. But, but my change is only bring into alignment with 5.11 and every other subdivision and every other major project that we have. And it does not change the bonus number, the actual extra 5% that goes towards the Village Development Overlay. So there's no fundamental change.
And the last question on this, because I don't have the answer, I should have this in front of me. Is the 5.11, is it 10% for, at 80% of AMI and 10% for 60? Or is it, is there a different number? Because.
No, it's 15% at 80% or 10% at 60% for projects above 10.
And this one is?
10, and it's 10 and 10 at 60 and 80.
And is there value, if alignment is the goal, is there a value in mirroring the language? So that it's 15% or?
Well, it mirrors the language in the, in the qualification of what, what, what level people qualify at. The idea with the Village Development Overlay District is that there are density bonuses that you can get that will allow you to, to create more units than, than you would normally create under a subdivision or a cluster development. And for that reason, it was added in that there would be an additional burden of affordable housing for this particular overlay. With, with village development, with, with open space and with subdivision and cluster development, there's still a limitation on the number of units you can get, and there's no bonus that allows that. So this, the VOD gives an extra little nod to the fact that you're increasing bonus and they're saying, or increasing density, and they're saying with that, you're going to add a little bit more to the, to the affordable housing unit.
And I guess, I guess the question still stands, should we, if the goal is aligning? And I guess the question still stands, should we, if the goal is aligning with the other one, should it be aligned?
Again, because the Village Development Overlay District has density bonuses that are available to the developer, it's treated, that is the only reason it's treated separately in terms of this. Everything else aligns, all the other subdivisions, major projects, all align. This is the only one that gives you an additional 5% of density for affordable housing based on those density bonuses that are an attractive component for the developer.
Thank you. Appreciate the answers.
I'm good. Hey, anybody else? Well, I'm just going to make a couple of comments, and I mean, there is no definition in the Village Overlay District for low income or very low income or moderate income. So the definition, it's only, it's not alignment. It is just to use the definition that is in section 511, too. I don't read anywhere in here where we're seeking alignment between inclusionary zoning.
It's in the minutes. It's okay.
But I don't see anything here that tells me that it's in alignment with inclusionary zoning.
The only thing that we changed was that the VODD in 516.31 called for a 50%.
Correct.
And that, since then, we've adopted HUD definitions of very low at 60%. And so it didn't make sense to have this sort of arbitrary 50% when all of our other tracking and qualifications were at 60 and 80%.
Right, but that has nothing to do with 511.
Exactly.
Well, if I may.
Well, except that 511 has components for 60% at 10%.
Right, but they're independent of each other.
That's correct.
They're completely independent of each other. You know, 511 has 15 and 10, this has 10 and 10. There's, I don't see an alignment here at all.
Well, okay, so I'm just reading the summary of discussion.
I'm just stating my personal view, I'm not opening this up for debate.
Well, I'm not lying.
I didn't say you were.
The word alignment is the first.
Don't look at me, I'm not.
Yeah. Okay, I just want to be clear, I didn't make that up. It's the first sentence. The goal was to bring it into alignment, was the, is Council Grow's statement. Nonetheless, I'm okay.
Read the motion, Council Grow.
Thank you. And the reason I was looking, because my question is to you.
Okay.
Sorry. So I'm just wondering, like, what is the rationale in getting rid of the payment in lieu? Were there, was there any, anyone consulted with this, experts, et cetera, to like, say why this should be removed from this specific 1516 area? Was it for that?
So again, this goes back to 511, and it goes back to the sort of evolution of the way the payment in lieu worked. And if you look at the language prior to this amendment, it's very fuzzy in terms of how they define what the payment in lieu is. And 511 actually articulates that the in lieu will be based on a certain amount over a certain period of years for a certain kind of housing. And so it gives a definitive number as opposed to a mushy kind of, we'll figure it out when we get to it. And by doing this, there's more consistency and there's more understanding immediately about what it is that a developer will or will not have to pay to get out of the in lieu. However, you can't get out of the in lieu past nine units anyway. So effectively, there is no in lieu payment because it's very unlikely that you're going to have a village development overlay of less than 10 units.
Any other questions? Council Worthley, I was not looking at the minutes, I was looking at the motion.
I understand.
That's, I was not doubting that that was there. I just, all I was saying is I don't see a link in this, that's all.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Council Grow, would you like, any other question? Would you like to read the motion, please?
I would, thank you very much. On a motion of Council Grow, seconded by Council Gilman, the Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that City Council amend Gloucester zoning ordinances, section five, special regulations, section 5.16, Village Development Overlay District, sections 5.16.3, 5.16.12, and 5.16.13 as follows. Under 5.16.3 definitions, do you want me to read the whole thing or just the changes?
I'm going to help you out.
No, I can do it all, it's fine. 5.16.31 is defined by the Planning Board. Quote, "Affordable to persons or families qualifying as, add, vary, under low income, shall mean affordable to persons or families earning less than, delete 50% and add 60% of the median income for Gloucester using the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD income guidelines that are issued on an annual basis for the Boston Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area, PMSA." 5.16.3.2, as defined by the Planning Board, "Affordable to persons or families qualifying as, delete, moderate, and add, low income, shall mean affordable to persons or families earning more than, delete 50, add 60%, but less than 80% of the median income for Gloucester using the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD income guidelines that are issued on an annual basis for the Boston Primary Metropolitan Statistical Area, PMSA." 5.16.12, affordable component. As a condition of the grant of any special permit for a VDP, a minimum of 20% of the total number of dwelling units shall be restricted, delete for 45 years, in the following manner. A, 10% of the units shall be affordable to persons or families qualifying as, add, vary, low income, add pursuant to the definition set forth in section 5.11.2 of the GZO, no more than 60% of AMI. And 10%, excuse me, B, 10% of the units shall be affordable to persons or families qualifying as, delete, moderate, add, low income, add pursuant to definitions in section 5.11.2 of the GZO, no more than 80% of AMI. The method employed for defining affordability to persons of low and, delete, moderate, add very low income, delete, shall be defined by the Planning Board, which may enlist the assistance of the City Community Development Department. The 45-year restriction shall be approved as to the form by legal counsel to the Planning Board, and a right of first refusal upon transfer of such restricted units shall be granted to the city for a period not less than 120 days after notice thereof by registered mail. The city may transfer that right of first refusal to another entity. Add, is defined in section 5.11.2 definitions of the GZO for the City of Gloucester and delete, 5.16.13 in its entirety, add, 5.16.3 reserved, and I so move.
Second. Motion made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthley.
Okay. On the motion?
On the motion.
I mean, I think we've gotten pretty much all the way through this. I just want to point out that the Planning Board reviewed this fairly in depth and reviewed it, gave a unanimous agreement that this is a sensible change. And again, it effectively cleans up the language and brings this affordable aspect of the development process more in line, if I can say it, instead of in line, more in line with 511.2, which is our current and most evolved affordable housing component of the zoning ordinance. So I would support it.
Council Worthley.
Thank you. I will also be supporting it. I want to thank the council for indulging me in a few questions that I had to ask, compelled to ask. I want to thank Council Grow for answering them as capably as he did, and Suzanne Egan for helping with this as well. Again, we haven't had any development with the village overlay, so it may not even end up being consequential, but in the event that there is an application, this makes it so that there's a better chance that we have something that's affordable. So I'll be happy to support it. Thank you.
There is one that's active right now.
We haven't had one yet.
No, right. Any other? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, this is a roll call vote.
Oh, oh, sorry. Right, you wrote it right on my little thing. Roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Councilor Worthley?
Yes.
Councilor Benson?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman is absent. Councilor Grace?
Yes.
Councilor Gross?
Yes.
Councilor Grow?
Aye.
Councilor Margiotta?
Aye.
Councilor Memhard?
Aye.
The motion passes eight in favor, zero opposed, one absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next order of business.
Individual counselors discussion, including reports by appointed counselors to committees.
Discussion by any counselors? Councilor Nolan, no? Okay. Next order of business.
Counselors' request to the mayor.
Okay, let's go roll call order. So where are we starting? Councilor Nolan?
Not much. I just want to thank the DPW and the Rotary Club for the great work at Stage 4 Park. The playground area is looking excellent. It's coming right along. It looks like a lot of fun. And yes, it is ADA accessible, again, to answer some of the questions on Facebook, and it's coming along very well. And thank you all for your hard work.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you. I'm going to reserve some comments of recent news till when the time is appropriate, but I did, we all received an email from the mayor calling for an audit. My understanding is that the council manages audits, and so I asked for a request of the mayor if the goal is, as stated, for transparency and accountability and all those good things, that in a very near future, there's a funding offer to the council to conduct an audit. So if there's a call for an audit and we're in charge of audits, then there's going to be funding for that, too.
That's your request to the mayor.
That's my request, to include funding in the next major report for this.
Thank you very much. Council Benson?
Nothing much. I just want to start getting folks to know about the upcoming farmer's market. It's going to be in June, they're going to be at Burnham's Field. People are getting very excited in the neighborhood about this. It's not that far away, so I want to kind of get folks to know about it, and that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Grace?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Grow? Nothing. Council Margiotta?
Nothing.
Councilor Memhard?
I would only like to draw my fellow counselors' attention to the fact that the next phase of the improvement of Mount Pleasant Avenue is ongoing, which is installing sidewalks and curbs. And then, once the sidewalks and curbs are in place, then they'll be doing the final coat of paving. The sidewalk work has, as you may or may not have heard, been somewhat complicated. There've been a number of gas lines cut and leaks, and then there's a little bit of controversy as well about whether people want curbs in front of their houses when they like to park in front of their houses, and in some cases, curbs make that difficult, although some of them are a graded Cape Cod-style berm rather than a granite curb. But when it's all done, Mount Pleasant Avenue will be a beautiful boulevard with sidewalks on both sides, from one end to the other.
Thank you. I have nothing. So I guess next we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Council Grow, seconded by Council Worthley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, oh, all those in post, sorry. Motion passes eight to zero. Thank you very much. Pass down their name tags to Grace, please.
Have a good night, everybody.